All right, we're gonna get going. Good evening, welcome to the July 9th Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fock, who is the Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way, there is Mr. Nick Konakis, Mr. Jay Mankira, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Jack Carrier, and I'm JP Boucher. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audiotape, and video. Please direct all testimony into the microphone and only one person speak at a time. You don't have tonight's agenda, they're on the back table under the TV screen. Tonight, we'll only be hearing requests for area of variances, so I won't go over special exceptions, just the criteria for an area variance. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any in all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. Tonight, we have five. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fock and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fock for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is what we call the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows: first, the applicant will come up and have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then, those in opposition or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then, the applicant has then five minutes to come back and speak in rebuttal. And then, finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We ask that you direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board and we'll get them answered. The second part of tonight's meeting is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask you to step out in the hallway. Acoustics are really good in this auditorium, so we can hear everything. Mr. Fock, is there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Are there any questions from the audience before we get going? Okay, seeing none, now we'll call the first case. Case number one is for Evan Whitworth, 7th Centauri Street. Description is Evan Whitworth, owner, 7th Centauri Street, Sheet 49, Lot 179, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach six feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct and attach twelve-and-a-half-by- twenty-one-foot garage. It's an RA zoning district. Welcome, and can you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Kimberly Whitworth. I'm from 8 Burnham Road in Andover, Massachusetts. I'm just here to help my brother out. My brother's here. This is Evan.
Okay. So, just, we got your application.
Should I read?
Go ahead, and I just wanna say, just present it how you want, or just tell us what you're doing.
Okay, so, this is a petition, it's a dimensional regulation side setback variance that we've requested. The purpose of the variance request is to grant the applicant permission to add a second garage bay to the premises located at 7th Centauri Street in Nashua. The current neighborhood home includes homes with two-car garages, and the granting of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor will it interfere with the public welfare, we don't believe. The garage will be for homeowner use. The second garage bay to be added at 7th Centauri Street will be designed in such a way to match the current structure, and the addition will be in character with the neighborhood. The purpose for the addition of the second garage bay to the current structure at 7th Centauri Street is as follows: the house is built in the 1960s, when two-car families were less common. This addition will allow the property owner to preserve two vehicles on the property, and also give additional storage for property maintenance, equipment such as a snow blower, trash and recycling bins. The addition of the second garage bay will not diminish the property values of the surrounding properties, because current neighborhood homes already include two-car garages, and the granting of this variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor do we believe that it would interfere with the public welfare. Again, the garage is solely for homeowner use. And, so, the special conditions that exist if a literal enforcement of the ordinance was enforced, the current structure and single-car garage located at 7th Centauri Street was built in the 1960s with appropriate sideline setbacks, I believe. Moving the entire structure to accommodate the second garage bay and maintain sideline setbacks in accordance with the ordinance isn't practical. In addition, the most logical, convenient, and appropriate location for the second garage bay is next to the existing garage bay and driveway. And, that's, so, if you have any questions for Evan? And we included, you've got the map, too.
We got your application, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Carrier?
Just curious, just to clarify, the addition you're proposing would be one-story garage addition?
I believe so.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, and then, I was also curious, like, the existing garage, looks like it's twenty-three feet deep, and the proposed garage is twenty-one feet deep. I was just curious, I would've been guessing that if this were approved, you know, it'd be the same length. I was just wondering why it's two feet shorter, if there was, just curious.
Excuse me, just your name and address for the record, just so we can have that for the record.
This is Evan Whitworth, 7th Centauri Street.
And just in the microphone.
Evan Whitworth, 7th Centauri Street.
I think it was done that way in order to not tie into the existing structure. I think it's easier and more economical not to tie into the existing structure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I took a look at the property, I think it's a reasonable request, you know, looking at the neighborhood, and again, the fact that there was nobody here in real opposition, that was the only thing that I would be, you know, kind of thinking about. But I don't think it would be out of character, I think that it's reasonable to request the second garage. I guess I don't really have anything that would pause me from approving the application. Again, you know, this is a, you know, a smaller, you know, lot, neighborhoods, the sizing of the lots, I think the homes take up a lot of the buildable space on the lot, so, for that, I think I'll be supporting the application.
If you're looking at me?
Oh, no, just looking.
I agree that, you know, it's not, I don't find anything onerous about the proposed addition. I mean, I did see, like, another two-car garage, actually, it was at the end of the street on the same side. The other homes there all had a one-car garage. I guess I, it gave, I had a little bit of pause about, well, is, you know, what's unique about this property to the others? If, I didn't really see anything different other than the home at the end, of course, there's, you know, that kind of butts up to the railroad track, so, you know, I'm not sure how close to the edge that two-car garage is, but I guess I was certainly gonna be sensitive if there was someone, particularly in a butter, who had opposition to it being closer than permitted, but, you know, we have no opposition, so, I just had, just wanted to throw out that observation and see what my colleagues might offer to that, and that's all I have to say.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I have, I mean, I still feel like this is a fairly significant encroachment, but, and I also recognize that it doesn't really, I mean, about the only thing I could think of, like, to get a second garage on this property, would be to put, like, a standalone structure kind of in the backyard, pretty significantly different, but to actually attach, even to try to attach it to the back of the house and have it so that you could get around, you're still gonna end up having to be too wide and into the side yard setback, so, I think it, just, the property, the structure is already somewhat skewed, unfortunately, to the garage side as far as placement on the lot. There's more, it looks like, a little bit more to work with if they could put it on the other side of the house, but I don't think that's practical or just, you know, reasonable. So, I think to get the second garage, there's really very little option here. I think also, there's the fact that, again, the right-side yard setback, or space between the house and the property line, and even the adjacent neighbor, I don't think there's any concern as far as any sort of emergency access to the backyard by this encroachment, so, I don't have any concerns in that regard. I think there's still, even just looking at the property in, by itself, it should be fine as far as that goes, so. And I certainly also would, if there was stated opposition from especially the immediate of butter, I think that would hold a fair amount of weight to me, but short of that and these other considerations, I'm okay with supporting this.
I would also agree, while, you know, I do see the point, that there's nothing really particularly unique about this lot, so, definitely true. That said, I feel as though two-car garages have become increasingly common, more and more than ever, and the desire to have a second bay, I think, is reasonable, particularly in our climate, so, the use proposed, I believe, would be reasonable. The encroachment isn't insignificant, but I do note, the most impacted neighbor does not appear to have an objection to that. Also, although this is just eyeballing it and not measuring it, but it does appear that there are a number of other homes that do encroach on the setback, or certainly come awfully close, including, it appears, the neighboring house of number five. So, kind of, given that potentially the house directly to the rear as well, and then also the one that's kind of catty-corner is also encroaching, so, it does appear, an older, settled neighborhood, I feel that there are a lot of encroachments to the setback. Given that I don't think the use is unreasonable, I'm inclined to support it.
I agree as well. There's a few other homes in the area that have the double-bay garages, and it seems like the driveway is already within the setback and being used for parking, so it's a pretty minor change from the existing use, so, I also support it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion? I'll make the motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Evan Whitworth of 7th Centauri Street. The description is Evan Whitworth, owner, 7th Centauri Street, Sheet 49, Lot 179, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach six feet into the ten-foot required left yard setback to construct and attach twelve-and-a-half-foot-by-twenty-one-foot garage, it's in the RA zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. We specifically spoke about the fact that there's nothing generally unique about the property, but the fact of matters that the property is an established neighborhood, the property where the garage is, is close to the side yard setback on that side, and we talked about the practicality of having another garage located in the rear of the property or in the back of the property, and find that, again, as stated by some of our members, that in this climate, it is something that is needed for this climate to have a second garage, and with that, so, that's the kind of the, that is the, that is the reasoning behind the approval of this variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interest, and we find that it'd be substantial justice would be served. With that, I make a motion to approve the area variance, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Motion passes. Just be aware, there's just a thirty-day window of appeal, but other than that, you can talk to the planning department to move forward. Thank you.
Sorry, what does that mean, thirty?
There's a thirty-day window of appeal, highly unlikely there's nobody here, but in case somebody would have a problem with this, they would be, we would stay the motion.
So, I have to wait thirty days to get anything going?
It's best, but you, I mean, if you were to submit a building permit within the thirty days, if it met all the building code requirements, we would approve it, but we'd just put a stamp on it that says that, you know, there is a potential for an appeal, but we would allow it.
Okay. All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close case number one and open case number two. The owner is Burgess Cole Revocable Family Trust, applicant is Kevin Burgess and Sarah Cole, 43 Wood Street. The description is Burgess Cole Revocable Family Trust, owner, Kevin Burgess and Sarah Cole, applicant, 43 Wood Street, Sheet 47, Lot 300, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to two feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct and attach two-story addition to the rear of the house, it's an RA zoning district. Can you come on up and give us your name and address, please? Thank you.
That's better. The one you have is better.
My name's Liam Larry of 282 Main Dunstable Road in Nashua, and I am the general contractor looking to build an addition for Kevin and Sarah here, and...
I'm Sarah Cole of 43 Wood Street in Nashua.
You can pull that microphone up or pull it out if you like, it's up to you. There you go.
We are, we're asking for permission to encroach on the setback on the side by up to two feet. As far as, we'd like to continue the garage on a straight line back. What I just brought was the actual original plot, plot plan from 1956. Granted, it's from 1956, and it shows that the garage is ten feet on a parallel line down the property line. When we went to the GIS, it did show that the house was slightly skewed, so, we were at ten-and-a-half feet in the front to nine-and-a-half feet to the back of the existing garage, and if we continue on a straight line, it could put us at about eight-and-a-half feet off the property line by the time we get to the back. So, that's why we're asking for the permission here. It really wouldn't make any difference to the yard or the neighbors or anything, because when you measure the existing fence off the property line, it's a parallel nine-foot-four right off the existing garage, so, when we're all done, even going back to twenty-two feet or, going back as far as we're planning on going back, we would still be nine-foot-four off the existing fence. So, that's why we're asking for it.
Okay. Be straightforward. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw?
It's almost not so much our question, it's just, like, kind of validating some of what was in the application, but I basically took it as, and from even what you just talked about, that by all kind of appearances, by that original plan, and what everybody's treating it as, it seems like theoretically you should actually be okay with this side yard setback. However, to know with absolute certainty, you'd have to go forward with a survey of the plot and go through that versus coming here, just, you know, assuming that you might be encroaching this very minimal amount, and so, you're basically asking for that relief. It's not absolutely certain that you need it, but that's essentially the situation you're in, right?
Yes, that is exactly correct. When talking with people in zoning and at the building department, they recommended going this route, otherwise, going through surveys and plot plans and to find that we may end up being at the same exact point, or it could just be the aerial photo, was that a slight angle? So, that's exactly correct.
And then, the other thing is just, again, I, you know, I think it's pretty clear in the application, but you're, this addition and what you're doing is going to just follow the existing structure as-is, you're not jogging out or anything else, so you're just following that same line.
Yes, that is correct. It's following, following that straight line, so not getting any closer to the property line than the existing garage right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Mankira?
Just for a benefit, could you explain what's in the addition? It seems a lot larger than the written description, so I'm just trying to understand what's happened in the addition.
The, directly behind the garage, it's gonna get opened up to make a third bay in the garage, so, essentially, you'd have a back-to, like, a back-to-back?
Tandem.
A tandem, exactly. So, that'll go back, and then on the side of that, there will be a family room that's not encroaching in any way, it's just going to the back of the house, and above, above it all will be a master suite.
A big one.
Yes, a big one.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we're all set, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier?
I think, I appreciate your clarification of the situation. I was interpreting it the same way, but I'm glad you clarified that. And while, like, a survey would actually solidify what's needed or not, the path here is, you know, they're seeking this as what I would call, like, a worst-case situation if it was eight-and-a-half feet. And if that were the case, I think, you know, it's a unique situation, I think it would be, you know, unreasonable to jog the house over or to have a wall at an angle. My sense also is, you know, from sightwalking it, you're not gonna see that anything's really cutting into the setback, it's just gonna look normal. And, you know, it's, and I think it's, I'm also comforted by the clarity of the design, because I think the applicant saw that through, and when we have designs like this, you get what the design is, and I think it looks good, you know, so, it fits the neighborhood, I see no problem with that, so I support it as-is.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support, I pretty much echo Mr. Carrier's comments.
I agree also, I think the encroachment is de minimis, and the way the extension's happening is reasonable, the scale, I think, particularly from the street, is in keeping the character of the neighborhood, and again, I would note, many of the homes in this neighborhood probably most encroach on a setback.
I agree as well, it's a minimal encroachment into the setback, and it's, seems like the most natural way to extend and add on to the home.
I also agree and support the application for all the reasons spoken. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for owner Burgess Cole Revocable Family Trust, Kevin Burgess and Sarah Cole, applicant, 43 Wood Street, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to two feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct and attach two-story addition to rear of house. This is in the RA zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. As discussed, as presented in the application and as discussed by testimony, the existing structure is potentially just encroaching slightly already into the side yard setback, and the structure is placed at a slight angle to the property line according to the GIS map, the original plot plan would indicate otherwise, but in light of this and the fact that the, if the angle is continued with the addition as planned, the encroachment could be up to two feet into that setback. So, this addition will follow the existing structure lines, so there will be no additional visible encroachment into the side yard setback, and this is a reasonable way for the applicant's addition that they're trying to put on to their home. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, there's been no testimony or indication that there be any negative property value effects by this addition, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, so, with those items noted, I move to approve this area variance.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mankira. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application approved. As I said before, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, other than that, you should be all set. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close case number two.
Yes, I'm good, I'm good.
I'd like to open case number three. The owner is Interconnect Investments LLC and GMAC Properties LLC. Applicant is GMAC Properties LLC, address is 7, 9, and 11 Domain Ave. Description is Interconnect Investments LLC and GMAC Properties LLC, owner is GMAC Properties LLC applicant, 7, 9, and 11 Domain Avenue, Sheet H, Lots 82, 141, and 128, requesting a use variance from the land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to remove two existing single-family homes and construct a total of eighteen multifamily units in three separate buildings, along with the associated improvements. It's in the PI and GB zone.
I have an excuse, too, if anybody wants.
My name is Chris Geida, and I'm a certified wetland scientist and soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and we're working with GMAC Properties to redevelop this, these three parcels. As you can see here on the existing conditions plan, there's three lots adjacent to each other, there's two existing homes, and there was one former home here that has been raised, and so it's currently vacant. Our proposal is to allow, as you know, the existing residence doesn't meet the current zoning either. What we'd like to do is combine these lots and do multifamily units on these three lots together. The area right now is zoned for the commercial usage, which, in the general area, is, I think, underutilized, there's a lot of vacant commercial buildings, whereas I think these smaller residential apartments are in much higher demand. It's definitely in character with the neighborhood, as you look on this plan here, there's already existing condominiums that I believe have gotten similar relief from the zoning, to be allowed to be constructed, and this elevation view here gives an exhibit of basically what we're proposing as far as the facade of the buildings. we're proposing as far as the facade of the buildings. I don't know if the board would like me to read everything into the record, or if it's...
So we've read your application. That is completely up to you what you want to do.
I'll just kind of briefly summarize. In the variance request, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Again, the general subject properties in the surrounding area all consist of a mixed use of commercial and residential properties, single-family homes as well as multifamily homes. This would be in keeping with the whole general area. It will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood, public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. Number two, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Again, the properties in the neighborhood are zoned PI and GB and comprise a significant amount of residential housing that predated the zoning ordinance. The proposed housing development would be in keeping with the current character of the neighborhood, and the proposal is consistent with the surrounding properties and thereby will observe the spirit of the ordinance as well, and also not threaten the public health or welfare or other public rights. Number three, substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance. Granting the variance would allow the removal of older nineteen-fifties and sixties vintage properties and replace it with a more modern multifamily units, allowing a bit higher density as far as residential in proximity as well to commercial buildings, workplaces, and kind of centralize that property and that usage. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding property. Again, the use is consistent and compatible with the surrounding uses and will not diminish the surrounding property values. We also believe that the removal of older homes in need of repair and replacement with newer homes and multifamily buildings will increase the property values, and it's harmonious as far as the usage and the zoning. And given this, we believe the proposal will have a positive impact on the surrounding property values and the neighborhood. And five, the special conditions that exist such that a literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. This area is zoned PI and GB, and the subject properties and surrounding are primarily developed with residential housing already, and this proposal stays very much in character with the neighborhood since the residential housing in this area predates the adoption of the zoning ordinance. And we believe that most commercial-industrial developments would be considered out of character with the neighborhood. A lot of these lots, obviously, are very small. If they were sold on an individual basis, using that for a commercial usage would be very difficult to utilize that in any type of reasonable fashion. And when we evaluate surrounding uses and the density, this proposal is also to be fair and unreasonable, fair and reasonable, excuse me. So again, in general, the proposal is in keeping with the neighborhood, surrounding properties, other similar properties over on Deerwood over here, which have been developed and are actually under construction as well. The apartment buildings here also allows for multifamily residential usage.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. McCarroll.
Have there been any attempts to get a general business or park industrial use out of the area, or is this really the first go-to thing?
It's in the much higher demand than industrial usage in that area. There's already existing vacant buildings adjacent to this and behind. And if you've driven down Nashua Street recently, there's a number of large buildings, commercial buildings, that aren't currently being used. As far as this area, I think its much higher and better use would be for residential, in keeping with the community surrounding it.
Just curious, when you introduced yourself as a wetland scientist, were there any wetlands there? Because, I mean, I wouldn't have thought that in my drive-by, but I was just curious.
Yeah, there are no wetlands.
Okay.
I just, it's a force of habit. That's who I am. I'm representing the engineers today. They were double-booked tonight, and I've been working with them on this property, so familiar with it. It's all high sandy Windsor soils, well-drained. No concerns.
And I guess while you're there, a question for Mr. Falk. Granted, this is, you know, LB and GB and PI zone. What would you think the underlying density would be if the zoning matched the homes on the street? I'm just curious for this size of lot. I mean, I didn't know if you had any idea of that.
Well, there's quite a disparity. Well, there's some single-family homes on anywhere from nine to eighteen thousand square foot lots. And there's also some more dense multifamily on the other side off Deerwood. You know, the apartments on the south side of Deerwood are a lot, I'm not sure what the density is there, but those are fairly dense. The new developments built on the other side of Deerwood that Mr. Geida mentioned, those are smaller developments. One's got like seven units, one has like thirteen units, and one has sixteen on about an acre or so. They're approximately twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet of land per unit. Approximately, I don't have any exact data, but that's what my initial guess would be. Something like that. There is a big mix. You know, there's some high-density, there's some middle-range, medium-density lots, and there's mostly some single-family on some fairly large lots on the street and Deerwood as well. There's a couple left.
All right. Thank you.
Also, some commercial uses as well at the end of the street with the auto repair and the lawnmower and chainsaw place.
Also, I'd like to mention that it does meet all the other applicable setbacks. It will also be going through the planning board as far as a site plan review for drainage and all those other types of issues as well.
Mr. Shaw.
I also had wanted to explore the whole density thing a little bit. Do you have the calculation? Because I think it looks to me like we're somewhere like 1.35 acres here, roughly speaking, with the eighteen units. So I guess I could have done the calculation.
Yeah. I don't have the exact calculation. I believe the highest density is like twelve and a half units.
Twelve and a half is the most that we allow in our C-zone. So this would be, let me calculate her out.
So acreage, Chris?
Yeah, .527.
Well, that's just one of the lots, though.
Oh.
Because you have .527, .437, and .416.
Right.
Did you catch that?
I roughed out to 1.34, 1.35, something like that. So .437 plus .527 plus .416 equals, so it's 1.37 acres, and there's eighteen units.
And what would RC allow?
RC allows, well, it's 3,484.8, so about just under thirty-five hundred square feet. RC is somewhat consistent to a...
Yeah, I wanted to try to get some calibration here to something, because that's the problem. We're talking about something like this in a district, you know, zone that's not...
Doesn't really have a density.
Yeah, so...
And with the fact that they're meeting all the setbacks and the open space, and there's a little picnic area in the front, meets all the parking, open spaces, somewhat... Well, that's all met, so it's probably consistent with our C-zone type development.
Although, I guess, and I hadn't noticed this before, but so it does look like on the right side where the seven units are, there's only a ten-foot setback?
Right. That's in a different zone. So this is the zone line comes right down the middle here. So there's a different setbacks in the park industrial zone, and this is general business, this one lot is. You can kind of see it here.
By the way, every time you step away from the mic, he can't, noting that you're not getting picked up.
I'll put it in my hand.
So I guess my concern in that sense is, you're looking for all this relief of putting residential in the PIGB, but I'm also kind of trying to look at it as if we were treating it more, again, like something like an RC, true residential. I would expect that there would be, and again, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but Mr. Falk might, but the front yard setback, which is this, what this dimension would be like, I'm assuming is probably twenty feet at least. Could be twenty-five or something like that. But I guess I'm concerned about seeing the ten-foot setback. I understand it meets this zone's requirement, but you're also not talking about putting an industrial or commercial building here. You're talking about residential. So you're trying to present something that looks residential. I'm not sure the idea of this kind of really heavy front, you know, forward structure.
Yeah. I mean, we're obviously just trying to meet, you know, the zoning as it is now. I suspect that that issue may come up at the planning board as far as that, the density goes and those setbacks. I think it's possible that, I don't know what to do, whether we change it to meet it. We're just trying to meet the zone requirements that was there. But I understand your point, certainly.
It's one of these where I understand, you're going to try to maximize what you can get on the property, but to me, there's also somewhat of a trade-off here because you're still asking for relief for putting something that doesn't belong in the zone.
Sure.
And so if we're trying to kind of look at it, again, more like residential, I'm questioning whether or not this kind of, just because you've met this zone setback, is really appropriate for this kind of structure.
Right. Yeah. I mean, it's something that, you know, we could certainly look at as far as, I don't know off the top of my head what that other zone, the RC zone, is for the front setback, if...
I believe it's ten feet for the front. That's correct. Let me verify with my code here. Yeah, it's ten feet front, seven side, and twenty rear. So it's somewhat consistent to the RC.
Yeah.
All right. The PI setbacks are much more significant on the other side. You know, they meet those, but they do meet the setbacks for the building on the right for the front.
Right.
It's only seven feet on the side, and they look like they're about maybe twenty feet away. I don't know, Chris, if you have the exact measurement, but they look maybe eighteen feet.
That looks right. Eighteen to twenty, something like that.
They're a little further back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I think we're all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? So you're not here for this case? No?
Yeah, I can figure. But I'm not speaker.
So, okay, okay. I just want to make sure. All right.
Want to copy the plan or anything?
Not really, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So there was only one other person in the audience that indicated that he was not here to speak on this application or just observing. So with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. McCarroll.
I'll kick it off. So I really struggled with this one. Maybe I don't struggle as much as I'm suggesting. I can't see how, well, I guess there's a couple of things that I have trouble with. First of all, I can't see how it meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The homes that are there, the single-family homes that exist presumably predate the existence of the zoning ordinance. So I would have to believe that, you know, in the wisdom of the city's fathers and mothers, when they decided to zone this area, park industrial in part and general business in part, there was an understanding or assumption that over time, these would redevelop in a way that was consistent with the district. And I assume that the way they assumed that that would happen, or imagined that would happen, is consolidation of these smaller parcels, which is exactly what's proposed today. But rather than consolidating these parcels and using them in a way that the zoning ordinance intended, what's being proposed is a use that's not permitted in either of the zoning districts that these properties are located within. So I don't understand how that can meet the intent of the ordinance. We do have circumstances at times where you have, say, a small vacant lot in an area that, you know, realistically couldn't be used for the purposes that it's zoned, and maybe some of it was necessary. We've certainly had circumstances where the character of an area has really, really changed over time, and an individual property or a building just can't reasonably be used, or it wouldn't be reasonable to require. But in this case, I just don't see that. Is there some vacancy in the commercial areas? Yes. But when I look at this property, it directly abuts industrial uses that are permitted in this zone. The properties that are located across the street and adjacent to it are not multifamily residential. I don't think one can say the character of this area is multifamily residential. No question are there challenges or vacancies in some areas on Amherst Street, but there's also a lot of commercial development on Amherst Street. There's new commercial entities and enterprises coming in along Amherst Street, so I don't know how we could say you can't reasonably use a property for general business. When I look down the list of uses that are permitted in the PI zone and in general business, they're extensive. There are numerous uses that this property presumably could be put to, and I haven't heard any testimony that they've been unable to, or that they've sought to put these properties, or they've marketed them for the intended uses, and have been unable to somehow find a buyer or find a tenant. So I guess for all those reasons, I just don't understand how the relief requested could be granted, or frankly, why the two existing single-family homes couldn't be used for their, you know, current single-family use, which would be, although non-conforming, permitted. That's me.
And I agree with all of that. Well, it certainly looks much better than what's there now. The current homes are not in great shape, but just concerned about the lack of a search for reasonable commercial or industrial use in the area. Demand may not be high for it at the moment, but there's limited space for those uses in the town. So I'd hate to portion away a large section of that for residential use and not have the option to have it exist when the demand is there for a commercial or industrial use.
I guess I was hung up on the density of this application, which is why I was asking a question and was intrigued by Mr. Shaw clarifying that to a greater degree than I was asking, because, you know, it's interesting when those... to a greater degree than, than I was asking, because, you know, it's interesting when those apartments that are under construction on Deerwood were before us, there were, there was testimony by a butters that the character of the neighborhood was single-family homes and that those were out of character of it. You know, but this board, you know, approved it, and, you know, I think nice-looking places are going in there. We don't have any opposition to that tonight, but I, I felt that way years ago on the Deerwood Drive project, and my sense is still that now, and that's why I was, I'm, I feel I'm, I would say a little hung up on the density because while it's not, you know, zoned residential, those single-family homes, to me, have, you know, a fair amount of space around them, and I look at eighteen homes here, I think that's a, a lot tighter than what's in the area, and, and I'm not sure if my sense would be, well, let's go to RC and call it about that, or maybe a little denser. I'd be like, let's look at what's in the neighborhood, like the rest of the street, and keep it about that, and that would be certainly less than eighteen, and, and not probably seventeen or sixteen, but, but, but less than that. So I, I, I guess I wasn't so hung up on, you know, another residential use because it's residential now, granted it's general business and PI, but I, but I, I am hung up on the density of it. That's where I'm at, anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I really appreciate the discussion about whether or not there's really justification for going with this residential usage. I also appreciate the point about densities. I do think this is a pretty tricky case in some regards, because, okay, yeah, there's existing residential, there's kind of a much greater intensity of use that's proposed. We can find maybe it's consistent with an RC, but then we're, we're into this, it's almost like the conundrum of trying to deal with, you know, an area that was zoned one way, maybe functioning not that way, but it's where it's a little tricky. I think we have to be careful that we're not, you know, piecewise rezoning this area as well. I mean, so it, I guess, I mean, I think it's a nice proposal. I think it would be generally an improvement to what's there, but I, I still think there is an intensity there, but then, then I guess I'm even further back to, okay, if you're gonna take down residential structures, you're gonna redevelop the land, then, you know, there's, maybe there should be some greater proof or effort to show that it's not possible to put the businesses or functions in there that the property was intended to be. I mean, the other, the other thing is, you know, there's still somewhere along the way, the applicant or others could, you know, petition the Board of Aldermen to rezone this, this portion of, of land and maybe make some residential zone for here because it's continuing to have that function. This part of things, there's already a lot of, you know, different pieces of kind of, you know, different zones throughout along this kind of stretch of Amherst Street, so. In one sense, to me, I mean, even the R-18 zone comes right up, you know, to, to Amherst Street on the other side. I mean, it's, it has the, the, the college as part of it, but still, you know, that's what that part got zoned at. So it's, there's, you know, clearly a lot of different things going on out here, but I feel like we are a little bit, maybe put into a bit of a compromised position in terms of how much can we truly endorse going to greater residential density, even though it was already non-conforming in that sense, but grandfathered versus keeping it for the, what the zoning says it should be. So I guess I'm really struggling at the moment.
I think, again, as we discussed, I, I mean, I really feel exactly, you know, kind of, you know, agreeing with some of the things that you've all said. This, this zone, I, I think is, you know, for whatever reason, right, it's, I, I think it's just not what it's, 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 it's not acting as a PI GB zone, right? So we know that this is kind of this odd block, street that just comes off of Amherst Street. I, I think we've talked about PI zones, you know, further down Amherst Street, down the, the Lee Lands area and how that's acted, and we've had some special requests on there to do some different things, not allowed, or, you know, not allowed in PI zone stuff. But this here is, again, this little pocket, I look at it like this, was this little pocket of residential. And I think that, you know, kind of what the teller things is, is that, you know, the homes that, that have been there, it's funny, like, I look at it, so the homes, people didn't, like, buy up the homes, they didn't, like, repair them, they didn't buy them to just put up a new home, right? A, a bigger home, right, in the area, so, so in, in some sense, right? And again, I'm not talking about the value or the money, I'm just looking at it, what's the intended purpose there? So I said, okay, that's not working, that's not gonna work for them. By testimony, we know that, and, and we recognize that some of these buildings are empty, and I know that, I, I respect what Mr. McCarroll says, I know he has a lot of experience in, you know, kind of what's been going on for businesses and what, you know, kind of things are going on, but I think there's some areas in Nashville that are just not, you know, then if they're off the main drag, they're, or, or they're not really maybe that desirable, I don't know. Maybe the buildings are too old, maybe there's, there's a cost involved in, in redeveloping in certain areas, maybe the space is not enough, I don't know. So I look at this area as that, really that area that's not in transition. I think it's, it's maybe reshaping itself. I, I think that, you know, and again, I'm comparing to Deerwood, I know it's a street over, but I think it's very similar to that. I, I did have some questions about the density, and I did recognize, you know, after, a little bit more after, you know, I mean, clearly, you know, seeing again now, now that I see that, the, you know, the setbacks, and I think your point was well taken. And I don't know what the right density is. All I know is that if I look at the two lots to the left, the two lots to the left, not, not the one in the GB zone, but in the PI zone, I'm honestly comfortable with that kind of, with that is, with that is. And I would be comfortable with it if it was kind of like a mirror image type thing, right? So I'm not designing the project, I'm just saying in general, I would be comfortable with that. Again, this is abutting one residential property right now to the, to the right, whatever direction that is. And, you know, obviously, we don't, we didn't, nobody's here to talk about that. And then again, to the rear is, and to the side again, is that, is that industrial, commercial use. I don't know, I, I think that we, we hear a lot about, I mean, I, I think it's a good use of this area. I, I understand that, that, that it's, the zoning is different, but I think for the same reasons that we looked at this board, when I was on this board, when we approved the projects on Deerwood, I think it was the same, same, same thing, the same idea, it's the same reasoning I would use. And on Deerwood, as I remember, we had only one instance where we had an abutter who was really concerned. It was more of privacy and lighting, and, and that was worked out with some new fencing and stuff. That was a project, the, the one closest to the railroad tracks in that direction. But other than that, I, again, I don't know any, I don't remember any real issues with the other two projects. And with that, I mean to say is that I think those came off well, coming off well. I think they're well done, they're well taken care of, and I think it kind of fits in. If I drive into that neighborhood, what I feel is that it's a neighborhood of, yes, there's some single-family houses, some little commercial at the end, but I feel that, I feel like it's like a multifamily type of a neighborhood. That's how I feel about it. You know, with apartments on the left, with these developments going on the right, I guess, I, my, coming around the corner, coming back out, I think that if I were to see more, that, that would be kind of like fitting in for me, you know? And again, I think that that's kind of where I think this neighborhood may be going or is going. I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, it is zoned the way it's zoned, but I think that, in at least my experience on the board so far, that it's been very difficult to, for the, for these properties to remain that, or for the use, or for the wanting to use that property that way. So again, that's, that's kind of where I stand, you know? Mr. Shaw.
So, I mean, I, and actually, looking and thinking about it a little more, I think, you know, the Deerwood Street Drive, excuse me, is, I think maybe even when we looked at those, we're already dealing with, you know, apartment buildings across the street, something where there was more of the mixed use of single-family and apartments. So where really I think Domain is, yes, there's some parts of the commercial and PI structures, whatever, that kind of are croaching there, but I don't think there's any other multifamily or high-density usage. So if I think about like the really kind of narrow definition of like the neighborhood or the feel of things, that street, if anything, is single-family homes, albeit not a lot of them, and it's only a single street. But the other things to, I think, consider is that when you look at the, at the zoning map, you've got, and for reference, it's in the back of our, you can see it from the back of our little, you know, intro part of the packet, but, you know, our, the R-18 that I was referencing earlier is the closest zoned residential to this, these streets, although RC is also, you know, just on the other side of Amherst Street as well, so. And then you have R-9 a little bit further to the east, I guess. So there's certainly mixed different residential zones, right, in this whole area, but it, you know, I think there, maybe the argument can be made that, you know, RC is nearby and by function is maybe nearby on, on Deerwood, but same time, if I say, oh, the closest residential is R, is R-18, again, I, I don't think it's clear-cut by any means, but I think that, it comes back to, I think, somewhat of Mr. Currier's sentiment about the concern about density usage for the proposal as much as anything, even, even if we say, okay, you know, we're, we're willing to accept the fact that this has been long-term residential and seeing it continue as residential despite the zone, but maybe the intensity of use is still really a question mark.
I guess I wanted to chime in with one other thing, is that is, if other properties, say on these two streets, Domain and Deerwood, were to be developed in this fashion, there could be an enormous amount of density ending up there, and is that the right way to go about it? You know, to come for a variance because it's not a residential use and a variance is given for a high, for a high density? I mean, in talking about the density, I, I agree, there's RC, there's R-18. I don't spend too much time on these two streets, but my site walk was, I was stunned at how heavy the traffic was to get on and off of these streets, and it wasn't even rush hour. And, and I, I wouldn't be jumping out of my shoes to say, oh, this is, this is an RC zone. You, you know, if, if somebody was saying, hey, you sat in the board a long time, we're gonna rezone this, what do you think it should be? That would give me pause just because of, of the traffic getting in and out of there. But, so, I, I, I don't know if it would be a given that, that RC would be what applies here.
Well, we just had that rezoning on the south side of Amherst Street. Many of those properties went to the PI mixed use, because we had, you know, like, just south of here, all the way down to about where Peter's Auto is, those are all like, you know, AI and mostly AI and PI zone properties, but none of those uses fit the zoning district at all. Almost everything in there came via use variance. And then finally, we just recently had a rezoning where there now, a lot of them are PI MU, so that just allows a little bit more flexibility with, with some uses on Amherst Street that really fit the, the street, the uses on the street.
I, I think you, you, you underscore, I think, the essence of the challenge in that what we're having is, is a policy debate about what the density here should be. We're, we're assuming, we're, it's as though we are contemplating rezoning this area and are saying, well, should it be R-18 or should it be, you know? I, I mean, and to me, that suggests that we're outside the realm of a variance. We're having a policy discussion about how a neighborhood should evolve. From my perspective, that's a conversation that should be had at the Board of Aldermen.
Just wanted to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I, I, I think that's a really cogent point, and I think that is kind of evident with the kind of stuff we've been talking about, that, again, we're like, oh, well, you know, I think the only thing that's, that's sensible in one regard is to continue to see single-family homes in these, these lots specifically, which is what they, they were, if anything. But to start talking about what's the right density really gets into kind of questions about what, what the zoning district should be.
And to have a single-family home four hundred feet away from, you know, very busy Amherst Street, is that the right use too? Maybe thirty-five, forty, fifty years ago, when Amherst Street wasn't as busy, it hadn't been widened yet, perhaps that was a reasonable use out there, since it was pretty far out of town back in the seventies or so, or even sixties or fifties when these homes were built. But now everything's built up and really developed all around it, and these, these homes are left on, you know, Domain and Deerwood, and, you know, we get the dilemmas too, because sometimes people around here want to put up a shed in their backyard or a detached garage or a deck or a pool, and because they're in the PI zone, they have to come, you know, ask for relief to expand a non-conforming use. There's other areas in the city too, like around the bridge going into Hudson, there's some streets there that are all zoned industrial that they have to come through the same thing, and people voice their concerns with us that they're being treated unfair because, but that's what our zoning district is.
I just wanted to pick up and say, I appreciate what Mr. Canakis had said earlier about, you know, if the PI zone isn't, say, doing well and, and there's more need or call for residential, is that really a, a need to switch land over from PI to residential? I think over the years, I've been reluctant to do that. In this particular case, because it is resident, you know, homes that were there, to me, you know, to redo those as homes or residential, you know, it's not like, I, I feel that, you know, we're kind of giving up PI land because it's there existing homes, but, but I'm still hung on, on the density issue of it. But, you know, I just wanted to say I appreciate that thought because that often is in my mind also, but here it's a density issue for me.
Just, just a comment, just kind of an observation, you know, as we're talking about this, one of the things that's kind of dawned on me is that this is a project that's being proposed, right? Was, was advertised, a butters got notice. If I owned a single-family home on that street, fits for me personally. It's, it's not to, not to, you know, purpose my view any further, it's just kind of an observation. And I was really thinking that this is, this is the type of neighborhood, the single-family houses, I would be here. You know, I, I would be very vocal about, you know, putting in, and no matter what the zone is, you know, these are existing homes, but it's just kind of interesting, it just kind of interests me that, that, you know, this not only affects one abutters, several abutters, you know, and there's, you know, single-family homes across the street, you know, one to the right, and it's just interesting that they're not here saying, hey, you know, this is a single-family neighborhood, you know, of homes, even though it's in, you know, a different district. So, just a point, right, it's kind of interesting that, so, when we talk about, you know, and Mr. Carter made a point too, it's like forty years ago, or thirty years ago, or whatever years ago you want to talk about. whatever years ago you want to talk about, it maybe fit right in, my, my opinion, right? But I think it's changed. Um, and, and certainly, I, I, I agree, I, I don't want to be here making policy or rezoning, I guess I was just looking at this, this, this particular application, what the request was, you know, to, to me, that it looked reasonable, um, you know, and in my mind, because I'm looking at it differently, that I feel differently about this area, um, the fact that there's nobody here, again, to my point, you know, nobody here, um, saying, hey, this is, this is no way that I want this to happen, or this is crazy, so, and then I'm just looking at kind of what's being proposed, so that's where I was coming from.
It's almost like this is a little miniature version of what we've seen all along the south side of Amherst Street, from like Peter's Auto to here, with all those rezonings that were in a zoning district that probably didn't fit the uses out there, and then we have the same thing here with the Deerwood Domain little block, where you have all these old, non-conforming, single-family homes that probably don't fit anymore, and everybody's coming in with something new that needs a use variance, and maybe a site plan, and...
And, and, you know, there was a comment made, like, oh, the whole street could have become this. Maybe in the future it would, maybe the zoning will change in the future, but maybe that, that this is what works, like, this is what will attract people to come live there, right? Because there's going to be a certain rent level where it's located, or whatever, and, and people who want to, to rent or buy these units, I don't think they're rental, or buy these units, are people who want to be real close to a, like a major thoroughfare, and are not concerned about having, you know, listening, you know, they're not, they're not out there, they want to hear nature, they're, they're just, they want just a nice home to live in, close to a major thoroughfare, and they're okay with that. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at, so. So where, where are we at? Anyway?
I'm sensing there isn't sufficient support for this application right now.
I mean, I, I guess I would throw out, I mean, I, I'm not having support for as it's proposed, but in terms of the density, I'd, I'd value knowing, uh, you know, when I, I guess in how we typically normalize density is square footage per unit. You know, and what is, what is a square footage per unit of, and, and I think when we see neighborhood, it's Domain and Deerwood, I, 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 I'd be curious to know that, maybe, maybe this density isn't that great over the single-family homes, uh, but I'd just say, hey, put that out there and say, this is what the density is, the balance of the street is, and, you know, obviously, there's, uh, you know, a couple of places on Deerwood where it's much denser, and maybe it's, maybe it's not that much different than the average. It, it, we don't, the data we have, which is kind of quick here, just looks a little denser than RC, and...
So you're saying that, um, that you would...
I, if, 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 you know, so I'd just throw this out, if, say if we were to table it and that information were to come back to us ahead of the meeting, where maybe we wouldn't feel that this is a, a heavily denser, uh, project, I perhaps might be willing to support it, but that, that's just me, and I just throw that out there as a suggestion, maybe to the board or to the applicant, a, a way to move this project through, uh...
I, I appreciate that, for, for me, that wouldn't make a difference.
Okay.
In, in my view, I, 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 I'm not inclined to support it, and a different or lower density, or if I knew what the average was for the area, would that make a difference? It, it wouldn't for me.
I, I'm not going to stop, would that, would, would that be any interest to you, Mr. Shaw?
I, I think, I mean, I would be interested, I'm...
Would it make a difference?
I'm not sure if it would make a difference, but this might be one of those, that's, that's kind of like some, you know, we have that basic question when we talk about rehearing requests, right? So it doesn't mean that, you know, I think there's, there's value in getting additional information, so even, you know, I might think I wouldn't change my view, but maybe I would, so I think that's maybe even where Mr. Currier is, like, he's not sure, but, you know, show me, show me the data kind of thing, and that'll help, you know, put it in context, and it, it might make it look more stark, I don't know, you know? So I, the other thing is, I think it, it would potentially also allow, if the applicant's interested, but there's an opportunity here for the applicant to reconsider on proposed density for this project as well. I mean, we, I, I wouldn't have a problem if we wanted to even open up the, you know, for, to get testimony from the applicant to see if there's, if that would be something that they might willingly explore, because that might, it might make a difference overall on the ability for this application to succeed. I think we don't know, you know, I think like to Mr. Mccarthy's point, you know, it doesn't seem like he would have support regardless, but, uh, the, so, that would be the other thing I was thinking about, if we're gonna, if we're gonna basically essentially consider a table, uh, that could be another part of what could be offered up to the applicants.
So I would do that, because I would support a motion, A, to open up the hearing, to, if there's support to table a motion for more, um, data, we'll just leave that for now, we can describe that later, I would support that motion to reopen up and get that measure, because I think at this point, there would be sufficient, um, members voting to table it, right? There'll be at least three right now, like, that I know of, to table at least two, maybe get more data. I don't want to, words in mouth, would, so would, would both of you support that?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing, uh, so that the, the chair can ask the applicant specifically to address, uh, the, our concern of density, and whether , uh, he would be willing to provide clarity on the density, and perhaps a change of density.
Motion on the table for Mr. Currier? Seconded by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? All in favor? That's four to nothing, with Mr. Mccarthy as...
Yep, so you can keep on, I'll just copy that down.
So with that, I'll make a motion, uh, we're going to, uh, open the public hearing again, just to get some ques, some answers from you, if you can come on up, please. Again, just your name and, name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Geida with Field Stone Land Consultants, 206 Elm Street, Milford.
So we're here specifically, so you've heard the discussion, um, so there's a, there's a couple of things that we just want to come out, so obviously, you can hear the discussion, you know what the concerns are, um, and so we're looking for whether or not, A, um, your client, um, would be willing to entertain, um, some lower, some, we're looking at the density?
Yes, thank you, and, uh, thank all the members for your input, it's, it's greatly appreciated, we certainly would welcome the opportunity to look at that density a little bit closer, uh, maybe be able to give you a little more specifics or comparisons with other zones. Um, it sounds like that we're kind of in a, walking a fence here between rezoning and, and variance land, um, and we certainly want to be able to provide those answers so that the board is comfortable with that, so, um, we're certainly willing to, to table the next...
Mr. Shaw?
And then just to, Mr. Currier's, I think, you know, I would just want to make sure, the point he was trying to make is like, basically up and down Domain and Deerwood, you know, just if you can provide the information regarding each of those properties, what the density is, because we have the mix of single-family and then the multifamily structures, so I think...
And we prefer density, what we typically deal with is a square foot per, per unit.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's generally how our different zones, uh, that's like the, the basic metric of density.
Okay, yeah, that's, it's basically square feet of land per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
So, so you can bring what you want, but, but again, you hear the specifics, right? Deerwood and Domain, kind of really bringing that to the table?
Yes.
And, and that, um, is there anything else that we're missing?
Were they gonna voluntarily look at their own density?
Yes.
Possibly?
Yeah, so, again, that's...
Possibly, that's what they say, they're with it.
It's, or, you know, it's not, we're not telling you to do that, we're, we're suggesting that if there's a possibility, um, to do that. Okay, we'll go.
I guess the other question is why we, question of ti, the amount of time to be able to come back with that information, our next meeting's two weeks from now, and then the second Tuesday in August, after that...
How much time do you think you need? I don't think you, you, we can't get you into the next meeting, because it's too, we don't have enough time to advertise, so it could be the meeting after that?
First meeting in August, second meeting in August.
First meeting in August, second, or it could go further out.
Sure. Whatever you think is your...
First in August, I think, would be fine.
Okay, and if there is a change to that, you just have to call Mr. Fock...
Okay.
To let him know there's something different that you want.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's the date on that?
First meeting in August is, um, let's see, that's gonna be the 13th, 13th of August, so we will be sending out our packages to the zoning board members on August 6th, Tuesday the 6th, so we'd have to have all the information in by the 6th, for the August 13th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And again, if there's an issue with that, I would call Mr. Fock.
Thank you.
And we can, they can rearrange the dates.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we all set? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the public meeting.
I think we're ready to make a motion to table.
Yeah.
I'm happy to record that, I prefer not to make the motion myself.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, um, make a motion, uh, on behalf of, um, Interconnect Investments LLC and GMAC Properties LLC owners, uh, GMAC Properties LLC applicant for seven, nine, and 11, Domain Avenue, requesting use variance from land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number 15, to remove two existing single-family homes and construct a total of 18 multifamily units in three separate buildings, along with associated improvements, this is in the PI and GB zones. Uh, this motion is to table, uh, this case until the August 13th, uh, meeting, uh, to allow the applicant, uh, to, uh, provide some additional data regarding the, uh, density of the surrounding properties, uh, specifically on Domain and Deerwood, as well as, uh, to offer the applicant, uh, the opportunity, if interested, to, uh, possibly propose some lower density, uh, uh, use for, uh, this application, uh, which the, we just did discuss with the applicant and, uh, was okay with. So with that, uh, we, uh, make this motion to table, uh, this, uh, application.
Seconded by Mr. Currier, all in favor? Uh, that's...
I got it.
Are you, are you, are you in favor?
Oh, I, I seconded it, so I'm in favor, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, okay, that's why, you didn't, yeah, okay, so that's four, um, and, and those opposed? So Mr. Mccarthy opposed.
Got it.
Okay, so that motion passes, so we'll see you on...
It is possible to second a motion, but not vote for it, so...
Second it for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so you can get it.
So your motion's tabled, the application's tabled till the 13th, so thank you for coming. With that, a closed case number three. Okay, we have some, uh, meeting minutes from June 25th.
If I wasn't here, I wasn't, uh, gonna be, uh, voting on those.
Um, I don't see anything, so, um, you can still...
You can still vote, and actually, only Mr. Boucher and I were here, so, the whole point is, all of us can vote on them, it's still just basically recording that, that they're putting in, into the record.
I rely on your collective feedback.
So, and again, if something in the future were to come up, they can still be called back and corrected, but...
Yeah.
I, I went through them, I didn't see anything that was there, and, I don't know, so...
I, I didn't see anything either.
So I'll make a motion to approve the June 25th, 2019 meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Shaw, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing, okay? Um, next thing on this is regional impact, we got the agenda for...
Should be on your table.
Yeah, for the 13th, for the next meeting.
So the Groton Road case, is that actually border Mass or not?
No, it's close.
Close, yeah, okay.
But it doesn't border Mass.
Okay, so...
That was the only one I think I had a question about.
I don't, I don't see any, does anybody see any?
No.
I don't see any, so, uh, for regional impact, no, no.
Okay, any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's to adjourn, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Mccarthy. We're adjourned, uh, those, all those in favor? It's five to nothing.
Seven fifty-five.
We're adjourned at 7:55, thank you.